Right now, there's an exception that this can be implemented by sergeants. And I know there's discussion about moving it up the rank, but even lieutenants and captains. Yeah, I think we need to have some serious discussions about who makes the call on blast balls.
That's Councilmember Kathy Moore raising some concerns this week about blast balls, so-called less lethal weapons that are part of some new crowd control laws for the Seattle Police Department that the city council is talking about. Well, why are these weapons being discussed? And will this help or hurt the city's cause to get the SPD out from under the federal consent decree it's been under since 2012? Also, what's next for the city of Seattle? We have a council member stepping down with three years left in her term. The director of a major city department stepping down after only two years on the job. And a mayor who's just announced he's running again. Well, all this and more this week on Seattle News, Views and Brews, your coffee break political podcast. I'm Brian Callanan. I'm a host on Seattle Channel. The views expressed here are mine. My co-host David Croman is just back from being on leave. So I'm going to give him a little bit of a break, just some time to catch up. And so I am here with Erica C. Barnett from Publicola, the publisher and editor of Publicola. Erica, how are you? Thanks for making this, making this happen.
I'm great, Brian. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm getting through. It's a grind. A couple of weeks left till, till the Christmas holiday and we'll, we'll talk about shopping in a little bit. Very important part of what we're doing. Thank you, Erica. As always, thanks also to City Grind Espresso, the background noise sponsor for the audio podcast on the first floor of City Hall. Thanks always to my show patrons. Brianna, thanks for joining as a member. And a quick note, patrons who support the show financially get access to patrons first content, get their questions about local politics answered on the show and a whole lot more. Check it out on Patreon, Seattle News, Views and Brews. When you sign up, you get a cool looking decal too. How about that? A big thanks also to Converge Media. The video version of the podcast is on Converge Wednesday nights at seven. All right, let's get the party started. Time for right here, right now. Erica, there are plenty of headlines to consider this week, including what could be a major development for the Seattle Police Department as the city council works on new crowd control policies for the SPD. And I want to put a pin in this issue of how will this affect the consent decree the SPD is under? Just for a second. First off, I want to talk about history because this is a complex story. So in the wake of the Black Lives Matter protest, the council passed some bans on the use of less lethal weapons in 2020 and 21. The Department of Justice essentially stopped these from going into effect, but the laws are still on the city's books. And aside here, the SPD's actions during the protest brought on 19,000 complaints against the city, which have cost the city $10 million thus far in court. Now, this new crowd control legislation submitted by the mayor in October would remove the right of people to sue the city for damages from less lethal weapons. And the mayor's plan basically leaves the use of crowd control weapons, tear gas, et cetera, up to the SPD. Though it does note the SPD has to meet the state's restrictions on tear gas. I know I'm just scratching the surface here, Erica, but I wanted to get your take on what the council is considering here because these are potentially significant changes to SPD policy.
Yeah, they're effectively proposing a complete repeal of the policies that were drafted specifically in response to the protests in 2020. And I think that is, you know, something that SPD is trying to play down as, you know, merely returning to previous policies. SPD is certainly saying that there are plenty of restrictions in this new policy, which does require the department to, you know, avoid using these weapons, except in certain circumstances to be determined by the police officer on the scene at the time. But opponents, you know, are saying, look, this is a repeal of policies that were put in place for a good reason. And Kathy Moore, as you played up top, you know, is also raising questions specifically about blast balls because those have been shown to be extremely damaging. I would say very hard to use in a, you know, concentrated way on one person.
Right.
And, and they're, you know, and they, they have caused people to, you know, lose eyes, have brain injuries, have to have reconstructive surgery. So they can be extremely damaging. I mean, they're called less lethal weapons, but they can be lethal.
I did want to make sure I had a little fine point on this. These measures that the city passed in 2020 and 21, those are actually not being used by the Seattle Police Department as it stands right now because the Department of Justice said, no, uh-uh, we're enjoining this. That's not happening. So I just, I'm trying to represent, I guess, what the SPD and maybe the mayor's office is saying here. We need something on the books that the city and the SPD can agree with. And that's why we're putting in these, these new laws. I just wanted to throw that out there at you.
That is all true, but I will say, you know, and I reported on this earlier this year. SPD was supposed to come up with a new law very quickly after that, that sort of edict came down. And they did not do so. So they were supposed to do this within 60 days in 2021 and did not do so. And so have sort of both continued to not obey the original law that the, that the monitor said was, was not in compliance with the consent decree, but also have had it both ways by not coming forward with a new law until now. And, and this new proposal again is, is pretty much just a repeal of the old law. So there have been a couple of years in here where SPD has just kind of not been following any policy. And now I think the council and Public Safety Committee Chair Bob Kettle is presenting this as a matter of extreme urgency, saying today that everybody needs to get in any amendments in the next couple of weeks.
Right, right.
But they've been sitting on this for years.
And that's, and that's the part of it that I, I guess maybe they're seeing this light at the end of the tunnel when it comes to the consent decree because the federal judge overseeing this, James Robart, I gotta say, he's basically let go on that issue of accountability, which is something that is negotiated between the city and the SPD's police union. So I'll put that in a corner for a second, but he is saying, well, guess what? If you can figure out this crowd control piece, then this whole consent decree that the SPD has lived under for the past 12 years, then that can be peeled away. And I, I think there's some, some hope there, maybe some excitement there. I don't, I don't know the right word for it exactly, but maybe the city's trying to push down that path so they can pull back this consent decree finally over the SPD.
Yeah, I think they're very eager to do that. And I think that they believe that this policy will be, will be compliant and that the judge will find it compliant and let the city out from under their consent decree, which, you know, would probably be a good thing. But the policy itself, I think, causes some concerns because it is quite vague and sort of directs the police department to come up with its own internal way of interpreting this, this law. Because crowd control policies will essentially no longer be a matter of law. They will be a matter of policy. And so I predict that there will be issues down the line if and when this is passed in its current form because it's pretty vague on when police can do what they want to do in crowds. And, you know, we haven't had another situation.
That's what I was gonna say. Yeah, you can't really test it out until we have another massive crowd protest. Not that I'm looking forward to that happening, but I think some council members pointed out, hey, there's going to be some activity like that, some political unrest in the city of Seattle when President Trump goes into, goes into power coming in January. So again, this is something really interesting to look at here, especially in light of those protests that could be coming up down the line. I did want to talk briefly about another briefing for the council this week. And that is on the Seattle Police 30 by 30 report. So this program is intended to make sure that 30% of each incoming police recruiting class, they should be women by the year 2030. The update this week, SPD is very bullish on having a new police recruiting manager. And remember, SPD recruits and these officers here got a 23% pay raise in the last couple of months to become the highest paid officers in the state. The report this week is saying, year to date, 2024, just about 19% of the new hires identify as women. I just wanted to look at this, Erica, because you've reported on a lot of issues here. And as much as, as much as the SPDs may be seeing some progress here, they're trying to overcome so much, including a former chief in Adrian Diaz, who was pushed out based on accusations of gender discrimination and sexual harassment against women. What do you make of the 30 by 30 effort? Where is it going? What, what's your thoughts on this?
Well, I watched this presentation this morning as we're recording on Tuesday as well. And I was struck by, you know, the fact that most of what the 30 by 30 presenters focused on was on, you know, recruiting women and making things sort of more appealing for women as they have children particularly.
Offering childcare and such. Right, I saw that.
Yeah. And, and to me, that is just such a tiny slice of the problem. I mean, the problems that were identified by the focus groups that the city paid for and conducted, you know, were not about childcare so much as about the, the way that men treat women within the police department and what they called a culture of misogyny. I mean, that came up over and over again. And my impression from the report and from the presentation is that that is not really what SPD wants to focus on. They want to focus more on making, you know, the atmosphere more welcoming to women as they have kids. They talked about having sort of sex segregated defense classes for women who don't feel maybe comfortable, you know, fully defending themselves or fully expressing themselves in, you know, gender mixed defense classes, but really nothing about, you know, harassment, about the, you know, the lawsuits that have happened and are ongoing about just this feeling that, you know, you can't get promoted as a woman. You're held to a much higher standard than men are. None of that came up in this report this morning. It's just all about, you know, having places for women to prompt breast milk and having childcare. And that is a small slice of anybody's life, you know, in terms of, you know, the length of your career and whether you're working in a good workforce.
Sure. Important issues, of course, but there are some larger issues too. And I just, I wonder about this, Erica. We keep on hearing, hey, we're going to have a list of chief candidates very soon here to become the permanent chief of the SPD. Sue Rar is an interim chief right now. Do you see this issue of recruiting women and how women feel within the department? Is that going to rise to the level of a big issue that a chief is going to have to answer about? What, what do you think about that?
I mean, I think it certainly should be. I don't know that it necessarily will be. I have not seen that really rise to a high level despite, you know, presentation today about it, but a high level with this mayor. And, you know, Chief Rar, who's, as you said, interim, has certainly raised it as an issue, but it's not been, you know, it's not been a real focus. I mean, I think that this issue of recruitment overall has really taken precedent in SPD's priority list and in the council's priority list. And that is just getting bodies in the door. I mean, there have been lots of, there's been lots of talk about lowering recruitment standards to get more people. So I, I don't see this as being, you know, the number one, two or three issue for, for the city when they're trying to find it. But, you know, I could be wrong. I mean, Sue Rar was, you know, to sort of counterpoint myself, Sue Rar was kind of a surprise pick. Yeah. I mean, she, you know, she, she is, you know, has, has taken some actions to sort of clean house and make changes. So, you know, I think it just depends on who applies for this job because it's going to be a hard job to recruit for.
I am so interested to see what happens there. Thank you for that, Erica. Well, coming up next, Seattle is not only looking for a new chief, the city's looking for a new council member with the announcement that District Two Councilmember Tammy Morales is stepping down. We're going to talk a little bit more about that on, now hear this. Well, a huge story still unfolding this week. Councilmember Tammy Morales is stepping down from her District Two seat as of, as of early January. She has said that she felt targeted over the last year. Her legislation was getting shot down seemingly just because she was the one bringing it forward. And she says she felt her work as a policymaker was getting undermined.
Even though there's a lot of conversation happening on the second floor about collaboration and respecting one another's differences, when I express a difference of opinion or when my priorities are put forward, there's, there's, they're blocked.
Well, Erica, you broke the story on this with Councilmember Morales stepping down. What are your main takeaways in talking with Councilmember Morales about this and her staff about why she's leaving?
I think my main takeaway was that she simply felt that she could not be effective and that it went beyond just being on the losing end of eight one votes. She talked about being boxed out of meetings and having legislation that, you know, would otherwise be fairly non-controversial. One example was a zoning benefit for small community groups that wanted to do affordable housing. And that was, you know, opposed pretty vociferously by some of the new council members. You know, I don't know that it would have been opposed if it had come from Dan Strauss, for example. But, you know, but basically she described it kind of a, what she said was a classic toxic work environment among her new colleagues and, and just sort of frustration and mental anguish that came with going to work every day in what she called a very toxic environment.
I guess just to offer some pushback from the council, and I know you've, you've reported on this quite a bit. I talked with Council, Council President Nelson about this, and she said this wasn't bullying or targeting from the council. This was just an example of a difference of policy positions. How do you respond to that?
Well, I think Council President Nelson was one of the people that Morales was referring to when she talked about there being a toxic environment and sort of feeling that Council President Nelson, as the council president, was not doing enough to sort of tamp down some of the stuff that was happening, even in public, where, you know, other council members, including, I mean, Councilmember Moore, were sort of berating Councilmember Morales publicly. Moore said that she, you know, conflated her with Shama Sawant, saying that she had called other council members, you know, evil corporate shills, which to my knowledge, she has never done, certainly hasn't done so publicly. But, you know, Moore said she'd done that in the media. Bob Kettle, you know, has been, I would say extremely rude to Councilmember Morales on the dais, you know, yelling at her that she caused the problem of crime in Seattle and the problems of police recruitment. And now was opposing the solution when she spoke out against CCTV surveillance. So there's just a lot of examples that have bubbled up into the public that I think are different, you know, just as an observer of the council. I don't know. What do, what do you think? I mean, just observing what we've, what we've seen publicly.
Yeah, I guess I've, I've tried to see many different sides of it. And I, I just remember, I, I'm looking at that laundry list and I really thought just from the start, the idea of appointing Tanya Wu, who Councilmember Morales beat in the 2023 elections and putting in that opponent in that fill-in seat for Teresa Mosqueta's position, position eight at the beginning of this year, that was really telling. And I'm not sure if it was something that was specifically in response or in pushing back against Councilmember Morales in some way. But it certainly came across in a way that it, it didn't make things comfortable. And I, I guess in looking back, I, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm hoping, I'm seeing, or I guess what I'm seeing is a council that's just a little less collegial in some ways with people who have some different viewpoints here. And I guess that's what I've seen unfold with, with Councilmember Morales.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's been, you know, it was, it was not a great scene with Shama Sawant up there. And I think Sawant did provoke a lot of that. And, you know, and we've talked about that before, but I, I just think that, you know, Morales, that's not Morales's style. She's not up there throwing bombs and, you know, denouncing people and calling them, you know, the evil Democratic Party or whatever. And, and yet I think the council has responded to her every move as, as if she is. I mean, at least some of the council have. So I don't know. It's, it's just been, it's been really noteworthy watching the council over the last year, how much she's been shut out.
Yep. There's been a lot of infighting going on there for sure. And looking ahead, I have to say, Erica, I was really anticipating watching Councilmember Morales working with Alexis Mercedes Rink on the council to see if they could bridge some of these ideological divisions that exist, but that's clearly not happening. You reported on Publicola that Councilmember Rink was deeply saddened by Morales's departure. She's also talked with her new colleagues on the council about taking a breath and committing to doing something different because whatever they were doing, it certainly wasn't working for Councilmember Morales. Do you see that critique from Councilmember Rink having an effect on this council? Are they going to be different in 2025? What do you think?
Well, I don't think that they are going to be different, but I do think that it is possible that Morales was sort of tainted by her association with the previous council and that Councilmember Rink will have an opportunity to have a different kind of relationship with these colleagues. I think that some of the sort of initial public reactions from the council were very defensive. And I think that that may not be their, you know, response if they sort of keep working with Councilmember Rink and, and, you know, are able to take heed from, from some of the stuff that Councilmember Morales was saying. I don't know that they're particularly receptive to, you know, a council member who's quitting and saying it was their fault in some way. But, you know, but I think there is an opportunity to perhaps have a better relationship going forward with Councilmember Rink, who is also very progressive and will be kind of on the, on the lefty end of the spectrum. I mean, pretty far on the lefty end of the spectrum compared to the more conservative folks around the council now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we will see. I, I'm interested to see what kind of bridges she's going to be able to build there. She did a lot of that work with the Sound Cities Association, Councilmember Rink did. So I'm interested to see where she goes with this. But I did want to look ahead to 2025 because we've already got the mayor on the ballot, right? Bruce Harrell just announced he's running again. The city attorney job is up for election as well, as well as positions eight and nine. And now we have this District Two situation. So as I understand it, Erica, the council is going to appoint someone for the D two seat early next year. Then this position will be up for election in November of next year for a two-year term. Am I close there? What, what do we got?
Exactly right. It'll be, it'll be up again in 2027 when, when Councilmember Morales's seat would have been up. So it's going to be a big year.
Yeah, it is. I was going to say, does this add to this whole idea of, I know that we really had a seat change, you gotta say, in terms of new members on the council, six new members at the start of this year, which the council hasn't had in a century. And you add these new positions next year, one, two, three of them on the council, that could be a big shift. Any thoughts on that about where this election is going to go? I'm looking at the council perspective mainly.
We'll see if Councilmember Rink's election is a harbinger for more progressive folks coming on the council kind of as a reaction to the rightward shift that we've seen. You know, Sarah Nelson, Council President, is up. I, you know, I'm starting to hear rumblings of people running to oppose her. But, you know, I mean, I think that the real potential shakeup is not going to come until 2027 when a lot of these new council members have a full term under their belts and are up for reelection. But there could be some realignment. We'll see. Councilmember Nelson has not announced her reelection campaign yet, but I, I think we're all assuming that she's.
I'd be surprised if she didn't. Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, and I'm not hearing any big names running against the mayor, who has been historically pretty popular. So, you know, I, I don't expect massive, massive shakeups, but it could kind of point the way for 2027. Oh, and of course, you know, the city attorney, Ann Davison, a Republican, running for reelection, you know, as Trump is going to be starting to implement some of his policies, you know, including potentially mass deportations that could impact Seattle. So I think she will have some challenges. She's already got one opponent who's declared Rory O'Sullivan. So it'll be, I mean, it, you know, for us reporters, it'll be a really interesting election year.
I think so too. And, and Tanya Wu, what happens there? Is she going to run again? I, I think it would be, it would be very, it would be throwing some gas on the fire if the council tried to appoint her again for that District Two seat. Any thoughts about her future, Tanya Wu?
Yeah. I mean, I have heard that she has been asking around about whether she should run again and is, is considering it. I, you know, will just say, I mean, she got very resoundingly defeated in November. Of course, next year will be a different electorate because it's not a presidential.
Right, yeah.
So, so maybe she's looking at that. And it's also, you know, a district seat. So it's not, it's not an election where you have to get as much support from across the city as she did in, in her recent failure to win. But, you know, she's lost four elections in a row to primaries and general elections. So, I mean, it would take some chutzpah to decide to run again after that record. But who knows? I mean, you know, people are weird and sometimes, you know, political ambition, Trump's electoral reality. And, you know, and who's to say that she couldn't win in a district seat? You know, certainly not me because I don't make predictions.
We'll see. And Erica and I are starting a People Are Weird podcast really soon after this because there's a lot of material there for sure. Well, coming up, yet another departure for the city of Seattle in a major department with a leader that's only been in place for about two years. Let's figure out what's happening on, what's next. Well, another person stepping down for the city this week, this just announced, Greg Spots, Director of SDOT, the Department of Transportation, for just over two years. He's stepping down as of February of next year. Erica, saw that resignation letter. Greg Spots wants to be closer to family. He's got a parent in California, one in New York. But what's happening here? Why is Greg Spots leaving?
Well, your guess is sort of as good as mine at this point. I tried calling the director yesterday. On Monday, when I started hearing that he had been removed, that was the original rumor that was going around. I don't know exactly what happened behind the scenes yet, but, you know, he has been sort of a, a real advocate, an ally of the sort of Vision Zero community, the Viking community, and came up here from LA, really saying that he was supportive of a lot of sort of non-car oriented options and promoting alternatives to driving essentially in Seattle. And he's, you know, the urbanist folks have been big fans of him, urbanist with a little U.
Yes, right.
As well as the Urbanist Blog, I think.
Right, good point.
And so, you know, it's, I mean, it's, I think it's going to be perceived as a loss. I always thought it was a little bit of a weird choice for Bruce Harrell because it's kind of this, this brash big city guy coming in and saying that we need to do better on stuff like Vision Zero. Their personalities never seemed to quite mesh to me. And the city council transportation chair, Rob Saka, has certainly clashed with him a lot publicly over issues around equity and, and of course, access to the parking lot that he wants to protect.
The Delred debacle, right.
Yeah, he wants to get a curb removed so that people can turn left into a parking lot of a preschool there. So, you know, I assume that there were probably some clashes behind the scenes, but I'm not entirely privy to them. I don't cover SDOT as closely as I once did. But, but yeah, I mean, definitely a big departure. And it's pretty unusual for a transportation department director to leave before the end of a mayor's term.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. And then I was thinking about just the implementation. We just had this transportation levy that passed and Greg Spots was a big part of helping that pass. Any concerns there? But, or I guess the biggest job ahead for the new SDOT director, whoever that might be?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a huge job implementing the transportation levy and just sort of being the, you know, the person on the ground for Mayor Bruce Harrell's transportation agenda. And so I think that, you know, while we've focused a lot on homelessness and addiction and sort of street level issues that are obvious to everyone, crime, police recruitment, the head of SDOT is a huge job.
I was gonna say, in terms of like the hierarchy there, everybody knows who the police chief is, maybe the fire chief or whatever else. When you talk about people that are really close to the mayor, SDOT is right up there, I think.
Yeah, because you're, you know, you're out there sort of saying, here are, here are our priorities. You know, we want sidewalks in this neighborhood or that neighborhood. And, you know, answers directly to the mayor, but has historically had a lot of independence. And so I think that recruiting and hiring for that position is going to be really, I mean, it's going to be a big job. I've heard possible internal candidates mentioned. But, and I, and so I don't know exactly what the process is going to be. Last time, there was obviously a national search. So, so we'll see. I'm not sure that this is the, the mayor's top priority or has been the mayor's top priority in the past. Spots was appointed with a lot of fanfare when, you know, when he got the job. And so I don't have any special knowledge about who it's going to be.
Right.
But, but it's going to be, I mean, whoever it is, has a very, very big job ahead of them implementing, you know, billions of dollars in transportation spending and, and navigating, you know, just the politics of the city council, of the mayor, of, you know, neighborhoods who always want more sidewalks and often oppose bike lanes, for example. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be a really interesting and important recruitment process that, you know, will certainly get press from me, but I hope gets a lot of the press from other folks too.
I do too. It's a critical part when you talk about public safety in Seattle, which is such a big concern. So many people, yes, that might be talking about police, but so many other people out there are saying, I just want to be safe on the streets because that Vision Zero idea of having zero fatalities clearly not happening in the city of Seattle. So there is a big, big job ahead. Erica, I do need to wrap up with you however, and I have to say, I delight in reading the three fun things segment you write on Publicola. And please take a look at this. The most recent edition, folks, has some insights on Spotify playlists, a delicious pecan slab tart and a note about holiday decorating, Erica. And I think you really buried the lead here because I learned that you worked for Hallmark in high school. And so I was wondering, is that why your writing style is so warm and comforting? And whenever I read it, I feel like you care enough to send the very best or no?
So flowery, my prose, famously. Yeah, I, I worked retail actually for a really long time in college, high school, college, and even after college when I was struggling to make ends meet as a young writer and editor. And yeah, I was the Hallmark employee of the year, at least for my store. Yeah, big competition between all, I don't know, six of us. But I loved it. I, I love, I actually loved working retail and I love working in gift stores. And I love shopping for gifts today. And it's just like a big, a big part of my life.
Wow.
No regrets.
Oh, I love it. And have you ever tried to write or star in a Hallmark movie? Are you, are you taking it to that level or what do you got? Because I got this idea about a girl from a small town.
Yeah, who decides to abandon her dreams for, you know, of being, I don't know, like a lawyer in the big city to start a small retail store in a small town in.
I don't know if you've heard that one before, but I bet you we could write that one by tomorrow. But Erica, that is awesome. And I do appreciate that you care enough to send your very best always. And I appreciate you being with me.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Thank you, Erica. Thanks to everybody listening to Seattle News, Views and Brews, where you can always find out what's brewing in local politics. Thanks again to the patrons who support the show. Brianna, thanks for jumping on board. If you are not a patron, please support the show for just $5 a month. Find the podcast on Patreon, Seattle News, Views and Brews. You can hear it on Apple, Spotify, wherever you might listen. And you can also watch it on Converge Media. We'll see you next time. Seattle News Views and Brews is an independent production of Callanan Media Services. Copyright 2024.